I wonder if I could ask everyone to have a seat. We're going to be starting, uh, we should be starting now. We're going to start, uh, thirty seconds.
I'm emotional, it's like it's burning.
I know, there's something.
Mr. Are you?
I don't know.
What?
Hey Tracy, we can't start without you.
Right now. I'm up there and I kept banging. Can we kind of get it to a certain point and leave it in the background?
Yeah, sure, sure.
I'll let you drive. You are the man. Let me get this thing going here first before you.
It's those two.
Could something please pause for burning? Uh, seriously, I mean.
I don't know what.
It's burning.
Yeah, there is, I thought it was me, but there is electrical.
No, no, it smells like gable wacky.
It's my new clothes, I'm sorry.
An Ellie Goulding song, I guess. Oh, you're here. Yes, take that millennial. I wonder, are we going to go ahead and, uh, call our meeting to order, please? Okay. We call the meeting of the Bloomington City Council Committee of the Whole to order. And we are, are we working on logistics here? Our, all right. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Alderman Black.
Here.
Alderman Fazini.
Here.
Alderman Freuen.
Here.
Alderman Lauer.
Here.
Alderman Sage. Alderman Millamway. Alderman Stern. Alderman McDade. Alderman Schmidt.
Here.
Mayor Renner.
Here. Boy, that was like a movie, Alderman Sage. Perfect time. Yeah, see, millennial over here. Okay. Now, we, uh, starting out with public comment, Madam Clerk, do we have anyone? Okay. If that's the case, then we will move right along. The items to be presented, Committee of the Whole minutes for October twenty first, two thousand and thirteen. Any questions or comments, amendments to the minutes? I'd move for approval. Moved by Alderman Fazini for approval. Is there a second?
Second, I got it.
Second by millennial Alderman, uh, Scott Black. Anyway, uh, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion curious unanimously. Thank you very much. And we will move on to the ICMA. That's the International City County Management Association Center for Performance Measurement. Recap on this. And we have approximately forty-five minutes devoted to this, but I guess that will be presentation plus discussion, questions, all of that included. Um, that's one of our major items then for the evening. And so I will turn it over to City Manager David Hales. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, we're going to have Alex McElroy come forward. And, uh, Alex is our assistant to the city manager. And, uh, one of his key responsibilities is to help, uh, our directors, our city staff, uh, be more aggressive and to be more proactive in this area of performance measurement. And maybe even more importantly, performance, uh, management. How we can begin to, uh, just, uh, at a very early stage, you know, start to, uh, gather some of the data on workloads and things like that. You might recall that, um, um, the, uh, if I've said in the past, the International City County Management Association, starting about ten, fifteen years ago, got very involved in this area of performance management. And it wasn't just because they wanted to do that. Uh, we also had some of the accounting boards that were recommending that public entities, cities, counties, even states, begin to identify in their annual financial statements to put more information in there on service levels. Because they felt that the public too often weren't getting the complete picture. You can see what the budget is or what's being spent, but maybe not what's being neglected. And in the case of light street resurfacing, which we've had, uh, a lot of discussion lately. There's been this movement afoot from many different quarters of the, uh, the public-private, uh, sector that especially for public entities, there has to be more disclosure of what is being provided in the way of service level. How good or bad it is, uh, do more benchmarking, start to really demonstrate to the citizenry, uh, how are we, uh, safeguarding and taking care of the so-called stewardship of the infrastructure? And the many other services being provided in a particular community. Um, one things that Alex has, uh, did is take us through a so-called pilot program he's going to talk about. And then this past year, we actually became full-blown members of the Center for Performance Measurement that he's going to talk about. I do want to just acknowledge that any, I think, one, uh, I think it's a very positive that we've hooked up with ICMA and their Center for Performance Measurement. Because across the country, what they've tried to instill is some consistency in how people are gathering data. Whether it has to do with workload, efficiency, effectiveness, uh, you know, uh, even productivity, things like that. Because the worst thing you can have is try to make an apple-to-orange comparison. ICMA has really been at the forefront of trying to ensure that if you want to participate and have true benchmarks and comparative data, it's consistent. And everyone is trying to gather the same piece of information so that when you do, uh, select those entities you're going to compare with, it is a comparison that is meaningful. And it's something that you can really use to learn from others why they're maybe more efficient, more effective, more productive than we are. So I, the last comment is, I, I don't want to understate the involvement of our staff in this exercise. You haven't seen until tonight, you know, some of the, even a glimpse of some of the data that we're preparing. We're trying to do it sometimes on a shoestring budget because we haven't really added a lot of personnel. But good management says that we need to start being able to measure our progress from year to year and what we do. So that ultimately you as the council can make those better, uh, decisions on a governing board late, uh, level of what is the service level we're providing? Is it good or bad? Who do we compare against? And it, but really, it, it starts with a lot of data collection, a lot of learning, a lot of training. And that's what you're going to hear a little bit tonight is our, our first year as full-blown members of the Center for Performance Manag- Management. And some of the things that we're beginning to show as the fruit of this effort, and I just want to say going forward, we hope in future years, that we even start sharing more of this data to the public. Because I think ultimately one thing we're shooting for is not just for the council, but the public to understand what are we measuring? Why are we measuring it? How are we taking that data to make a difference from efficiency effectiveness? And how do we then start to report this data to the public at large? So, um, let me turn to Alex. We have provided a lot, this written material to you. And he and the other presenters tonight are being asked to move quickly through this information so that we can have some good discussion, question and answer with you, the council. Thank you, Alex McElroy.
Thank you, City Manager. And thank you, council, for braving the freezing cold weather to be with us today. A little bit on the history and, uh, David has already touched on this already. The ICMA, the acronym stands for International City County Management Association. A program that they run is the Center for Performance Measurement. Uh, the CPM was started back in nineteen ninety-four when twenty of the largest, uh, U.S. cities went to the ICMA and asked them to really champion a performance measurement program where they could develop common measures, encourage comparisons, identify effective management practices. And then based on all this information, identify and be able to learn from high performers. What does it measure? It measures eighteen different service areas. Highlighted in bold are the ones that were applicable to our unique organization. Those are the ones that we provided responses for. So all told, it was fourteen out of the eighteen service areas that they measured. A quick summary, and I, I, I won't be able to say this enough in my presentation, that this was a significant undertaking on the behalf of our staff. On top of their already busy workloads, we asked them in short order to put together a lot of information from this survey. I brought with me a, a folder I had. I helped coordinate it with all the departments. This is all their questioning that they had, and you can see it's rather thick, and these are actually both sides. So of the, of the fourteen service areas we responded to, it was a, you know, a significant undertaking on behalf of our staff. And they, they really met the project head-on. Uh, they were fearless a lot of times in their responses. And they seemed very eager to be able to share their performance information, which I think speaks a lot about our staff. Uh, quick summary. We reported fiscal year two thousand and thirteen data. Uh, it started in August where we received training from an ICMA coordinator that actually came down, educated our staff on the type of questions that they would be asking. You actually see a picture of that training in the bottom right there. Um, we had representatives from each department come in and receive the training. They were able to ask one-on-one questions about what type of information do you want in this response? Very specific. So they were provided that opportunity before we began providing information. In September, the ICMA sent us a response form. It was just an Excel form for our staff to enter in all this data. And then by October first, that information was due to the ICMA. So again, very short turnaround time, uh, very labor-intensive. And, uh, our staff really just did a phenomenal job based on everything else that they have to do in getting all this information to them in a timely manner. And just this December, we've, we've received the results. They went through a, uh, cleaning process back in November. They actually sent us, uh, what they perceived as possible outliers. They thought maybe we might have answered the question incorrectly or included something that shouldn't have been. We were able to clarify those. And then we got our results back in December. So we've only had the information for a little bit of time, but we're now being able to start to reflect on the, all the various information that we got. Process again was highly involved, labor-intensive, a very thorough lining of questioning, a short timeframe. And as I showed with the previous slide, some of the questions that they asked were not applicable to our service areas. Other questions we identified as it would take us more time and energy to provide an answer without that mutual benefit. Some of the questions, we just didn't see much of a benefit from answering. So we did leave some blank, but it was due to, uh, the need to be efficient. Who participated? In this past fiscal year reporting, there were thirty-nine jurisdictions that participated. Um, in two thousand and twelve, the ICMA had actually over a hundred participants in both the one-on-one program and the full-blown program. Since we participated this year, we're privy to the performance data of last year as well. Um, the cities varied in population sizes from five thousand to over a million. They obviously varied in different service levels and their service types. Based on those thirty-nine that did participate, we identified eleven jurisdictions based on their population size, service area, and organizational composition to benchmark ourselves against. And this is more for general purposes. There are some service areas that lend themselves to be compared to municipalities outside of this eleven. We're aware of that, and we're continuing right now to work on identifying, uh, specifically for each department, who would be the best comparisons. What it is and what it isn't, the, the line of questioning is very outcome-oriented. It's all driving at what were the results as, uh, a result of delivering services. Um, it's a method for highlighting successes, but it's also a method of identifying areas that you need improvement. What it is not, it's not a data collection exercise. It's not something that we're trying to keep staff busy doing. It's really something that we need to see the benefit in receiving this information before we begin to track it. It's not a one-size-fix-all, and it's not a punitive system. That's one stigma that's associated with performance measurements is it's going to be used as a, uh, disciplinary tool. That's really not the intent that city management and department heads have with their performance measures. It's really a tool for them to improve services. Why it's important, I could have made this into five different slides, but for sake of brevity, I consolidate down to one. Just put the, the major, major ones on it. Most federal grants now require outcome evaluations or performance measurements in their applications. Bond sales require indicators of financial condition, which are well-presented by performance data. Local government revenues are becoming insufficient, making effective use of resources imperative. Uh, both the GASB and the GFOA are promoting performance measurements, indicating it may soon become a requirement. And finally, it provides a way to quantify to citizens as well as the local government, how well the local government is doing compared to previous years and other municipalities. I.e., what bang you're getting for your buck. Some examples, I, three quick examples that the ICMA shared with us, and I thought would be pertinent to share with the council today. Uh, the first example shared with us came from a city in Wyoming. And this was after participating in the ICMA program, they found that their fleet rate accidents were significantly higher than their peers. And they wanted to figure out why. So they actually formed a committee, and they asked that committee to get to the root of the problem. Why did they have so many fleet accidents compared to their peers? And the committee looked at performance data first. They looked at their average daily traffic counts. They looked at what time of day their, their fleet was traveling around the city. They looked at, um, they looked at, um, their average daily traffic count. And they really couldn't find much, but then they started to dig deeper, and they looked at how far away the accidents were from City Hall. And not only did they find that accidents were within five miles, they found that they were actually within one mile, a significant number of them. And so then they began to look at what type of accidents they were. And they found that overwhelming majority of them were actually rear-end collisions. So when they shared this information with the departments, what they found out was a lot of their first responders or their emergency responders, when they were leaving their parking decks, were running into these pillars that in low light and poor markings were difficult to see. So for the cost of a can of paint, they were able to paint the pillars bright yellow and greatly reduce their, uh, fleet accidents. Another example, um, comes from a suburb in Atlanta. It was a council meeting night, and the public works director knew he was going to be on the hot seat for potholes. The city manager gave him a heads-up. He said, "The council's going to bring up potholes tonight, and I want you prepared to be able to speak toward them." So the public works director went back and got all the performance information he could find. He knew exactly how many potholes the city had in their inventory. He knew how many that, uh, they had filled that year. He knew how many staff hours they've spent filling it, how much material. He even knew how much it cost them to repair one pothole. And after sharing all this information with his council, one of the council members asked, "Well, how much should it cost to fill a pothole?" And the, the public works director didn't have an answer for him. He didn't have an answer because they'd never compared their performance results to any other municipality. So in participating in this program, it really gives us, uh, an opportunity to begin to answer those questions of, well, how much should it cost? One final example, this is a city in Seattle metro area. It was a fire chief reflecting on his performance measures, and he saw a community close to his that had excellent, um, an excellent ability to confine fires within the room of origin. That's one measure that is tracked. And it was perplexing to him because his department was much more efficient at getting at the fires quickly. The high-performing department that really kept those fires within the mark, within the room of origin, had pretty low numbers as far as response times and getting to the fire. So he was wondering how their guys were so good, once they got there, at keeping the fire in the same room as opposed to his guys. And we all know how expensive fire departments can be if you're looking at funding new fire departments, new staff, um, pensions, overtime. It's a very expensive endeavor. So he reached out to this high-performing city, and he asked, you know, "How, how are you guys handling these fires? And how are you able to contain them in the room of origin so effectively?" And the fire chief and the other city shared that with the fire chief that they actually have residential sprinkler ordinances. So by the time they got to the fire, the fire was pretty much already contained. So they didn't have a need to really hit that quick response time for these fires because they had residential sprinklers in the majority of their homes. So these, these are, you know, some of the information and types of information that we can get in participating in the ICMA program. And again, it's all about collecting information, comparing to peers, identifying best practices, and improving services. What did our efforts produce? This is, um, I have four slides here, just brief examples of quick reflections on some of the performance measures. How to read this, the, the top four rows in bold are the, um, the entire participating thirty-nine organizations. So the average of all thirty-nine, the standard deviation or the variance between the, uh, average and the median for all participating organizations. And then the cities listed below are taken from those eleven we've identified as general benchmarks for the city of Bloomington.
If I could just clarify, so you, the, um, what do you mean by benchmark? What's the hundred-and-forty-four-thousand-three-hundred-thirty?
That's the average from all thirty-nine participants. So the average population. I'm sorry.
Popu- that's the population? Oh, service, I'm sorry, population. Okay. Thank you. Sorry.
So looking at this example, uh, code enforcement officers, four-point-two, uh, FTEs, hours paid, eight thousand. What, what we did, uh, hit and see here is under our expenditures per capita, we're very close to the average participants. When you look at some of our peers, we, we appear to be slightly higher. So these are some things that we're going to begin to look into. And then when you look at the expenditures per code enforcement cases resolved by any means, you could, obviously, we, we represent ourselves as an outlier there. That's certainly something that we're going to have to look at and see if there's something skewing those numbers. But these are the questions that we can now begin to ask now that we have this information, department heads can see this and begin to ask, well, why? And, you know, what did we include that other cities didn't? Or what are we doing that's not as effective as these other cities? Another example, in our parks, recreation and cultural arts, you can see our total developed park acreage. They were very detailed with their line of questionings for all these service areas. Um, we have a, a good number of park acres that have been developed, uh, compared to our peers. Our total park acreage by populated, by one thousand population, um, rather close to our peers there. One thing that you can see here is we do invest a significant amount, uh, in our parks and recreation department. One interesting measure that I saw, net revenue per capita excluding utilities for park and recreation activities. So how much money you're gaining and or losing based on your, uh, parks and recreation department. We're doing significantly well based on the average and based on what our peers are doing. I believe the, the lowest was negative a dollar. So nobody was making money off their parks and recreation programs. But, uh, it was negative dollar, there was one that was negative five dollars, and then I think we were in third with negative seven. So again, uh, opportunity to really highlight some of our successes. Uh, we can also benchmark our workload. Uh, this is a, an example from our police department. You can see based on our population, we have one-point-six full-time employees per thousand. Um, our police department, although one-point-six, you can see the average here is two-point-two. Although we have the one-point-six, it doesn't appear based on our police dispatch calls per one-thousand population that we're less any busy than any of these other cities. You can see we're above the average that was taken there. And then our UCR part-one crime reports, uh, very close to our peers in that one. And then our UCR part-one crime report number reported property crimes, you can see, we're fairly lower. And I, I do know that Rock Hill is about twenty miles south of, um, Charlotte, North Carolina. So that might be why they're significantly higher there. And then this is, uh, efficiency benchmark and really a workload benchmark. One thing that really pops out there, and I actually had to go back to the fire chief and ask him if that number was right. You can see based on our population, our FTEs per one-thousand is significantly lower than our peers. And really, it was the lowest that was recorded in the thirty-nine jurisdictions. So that was something I, I went back to chief, and we, we looked at it, and it, it actually was correct. But you can see, uh, on a, an efficiency standpoint, our time from emergency fire call entry to conclusion of dispatch was one minute or less. We hit that mark seventy-eight percent of the time. Average was fifty-seven percent. The time from, uh, emergency fire call entry to arrival on scene was five minutes or less per, as a percentage. We hit that mark seventy-seven percent of the time with the average being forty-eight percent of the time. And the number of seconds to respond to a residential fire structure, you can see we were two-hundred-and-sixty seconds, which was twenty-nine seconds below the average of two-hundred-and-eighty-nine. So going forward, what are the next steps? Uh, again, we just received this information in December. We're, we're just now really beginning to reflect on the results. Um, we're going to go back and analyze them, refine our benchmarks, really find those apples-to-apples comparisons, uh, continue to incorporate additional ICMA CPM measures into our monthly reporting system. Some measures that they, um, were asking us for, we didn't have answers to, but we wanted answers to. So the, these are things that we plan to do going forward to begin to track. Again, what are the next steps? Once we've benchmarked services, we're going to begin to network with high-performing organizations to really identify those best practices and implement them. And then continue to share progress with our public and our council. And all this for the purpose of providing quality, basic municipal services at the best value. And I included there a, a quick quote from a former ICMA director. "Performance measures are not theoretical concepts. They are practical tools that legislators and administrators can use when choosing between alternative courses of action." And I wanted to end the presentation again, just kind of highlighting our, our staff efforts and our staff's achievements. You can see we share performance data monthly in the city manager's monthly report, and that's a report that's really authored by every department within the city. We also have begun to share performance information in our annual budget. As a result, in two thousand and twelve and two thousand and thirteen, we received the certificate of distinction for performance management efforts. for performance management efforts from the ICMA CPM. We received from the Association of Marketing and Communication Professionals a Hermes Gold Award for enhancing communication between citizens and government. And in 2011, 2012, and 2013, we've received the GFOA Distinguished Budget Award, a criteria of which is including performance measures. That's really all I have tonight, so I'll hand it over to-
Let me just add, just one or two other comments. I do want to say that the ICMA Center for Performance Measurement and this particular program goes hand-in-hand with our discussion of revitalizing the city government. It goes hand-in-hand with the Baldridge Performance Excellent Program, which has been identified nationwide as a model to follow both in the public and private sector. And one of the key criterias is looking at results and be able to look at your processes, trying to look for efficiencies, outcomes, customer service, things like that. So I think our efforts to date, you know, although it's in the early beginning, is part and parcel of everything we've been talking about of how we can continue to raise the bar on the performance of our organization and provide not only more efficient and effective service to our citizens, but also to provide greater customer service. And lastly, these directors have been very much involved. I think this is a program, typically you would find directors having a lot more time to do this kind of outreach, going to some of these best-of-class or some of these high-performing cities, learning, but they're, they just don't have the time. So much as a day-to-day kind of working manager type of, but through the CPM process, we can begin to find out who are those cities that really stand out that we may want to find out more. Because the bottom line is how can we improve and improve in each of the departments and each of the services? But it's something that the directors can start to share this with their employees and say, "Why do you think this is the case?" You know, "How can we first learn from what we're doing, but how can we learn from others?" So I think it's a great beginning. It wouldn't have got to this point without Alex McElroy and him taking the lead and the effort of the directors and their staff to be committed to participating. So with that, Mayor, I'll turn the time back to you and the council for questions.
Thank you very much. Thank you, City Manager, and thank you, Alex. Just, obviously, this is important for us as decision-makers, and it's important for our city manager. It's also important for our department heads. It's important for the citizens to understand and see where we are in relation to other things, other places. But it's also important for us when we're making trade-offs at budget time, where we realize, hey, you know, we're probably okay in this area, or maybe we have just a little less than average staff in one area, but we're maybe really understaffed in another area. And so when people ask us for more resources, we can put that into some kind of context rather than sort of the anecdotes of people who are on the street. So I certainly can't speak highly enough. I wish that we had done this when I was at the ICMA. This is many years after I left. I could have taken credit for something else. But anyway, comments or questions from members of the council? Alderman Black, Schmidt, Fazini, and Sage?
Thank you. I'm curious, going through this presentation and seeing the different metrics in departments that we looked at, where is Bloomington the leader? So we talk about networking with high-performing organizations. Where are we that high-performing organization that people want to network with us?
Great question. We really haven't been able to analyze it that deeply. One of the examples I did show under Parks and Rec as far as net revenue per capita, that really stood out to me. There was really only two other cities that I saw that was losing less money than we were.
Okay. My microphone's not working. So looking at that one, I'm curious as to how Tracy, California, has four total acreage per 1,000 population, but negative 52 in revenue outcome, so.
They must have more than a coliseum around their neck.
We're very fortunate. Thank you.
I'm sorry. All the women, Schmidt, you were second.
First of all, thank you very much for all the work that went into this. I don't think I will ever again whine about doing my little annual reports for my standards organizations in the library world. When we look at the other communities that we benchmark ourselves against, do we have the opportunity, when we think about cost per whatever service it is, or however the cost analysis works out, are we able to pick other communities that have a similar kind of financial structure where we're looking at union employees? Or, I mean, can we, can you pick and choose? Or how do you know how you're going to benchmark? Or who you're picking to benchmark?
We can, and that's something that the ICMA really tries to do a great job as far as getting those detailed questions. That's kind of why this document is so thick, because they really provide those demographic questions. What does your organization look like? How's it structured? Before they start asking, you know, more results-based questions. So we have a lot of demographic questions that we can compare. And the 11 jurisdictions that I selected for benchmark really are for general purposes. A lot of things like for our fire department, for example, we'll also want to look at communities that have to service an airport. That would be a lot better comparison for our sake. So we do have that opportunity, and I think with the data set and our 2012 data, we'll have enough to be able to benchmark some services with, so.
Mayor, can I just make a point of privilege? I just want everyone to know, we think the problem is in an electrical ballast. That's why they're back there trying to get up into the roof. So there is something that's going on. So I just wanted you to know that we're in capable hands. They're trying to get to the, to find out just where the smell's coming from. So there is something going on there, but we'll keep you-
If I see fire, then we'll, then maybe we might adjourn. But moving right along to Alderman Fazini, and then I see Alderman Fruen, we'll follow all the women, Sterns. Sage, no, yeah, I have, at this point, I have Fazini, Sage, Sterns, Fruen, and Mila Wambway. So, Rob?
Yeah, and Alex, in attending two Illinois Municipal League annual conferences and visiting six other city councils, something came up at several of the different meetings that I've been to where city council members with certain expertise were assigned to help departments where their expertise might be helpful. And I think that might be one way where we can improve finding out more from these other cities and having the councilmen, councilwomen lend their expertise to the department heads. And it doesn't have to be the whole council for the whole set of all the departments. It can be one of us helping two different departments or two people helping one department where the expertise is available. So I'd offer that as a suggestion for where maybe we can make some more progress because I think it's absolutely critical for a policymaking board to have the data that this presents, and not just in the one year, but to develop it over historical perspective. So we could start to see next year and the year after how we're doing in comparison to our, the groups that we pick, whoever they are, just keep them consistent. But I really like what I see. It looks like a policymaking kind of tool that has been missing. So, thank you. Alderman Sage?
Alex, thanks very much. I, you know, I've done a little bit of this, and I understand the scope of this, and this is outstanding. And so I really appreciate that. I think, Terry, you mentioned something that I think is key, and that is what you're creating is a decision support system, right? I mean, that, and that's just absolutely vital. So I, that's a giant step forward. So I really appreciate that. Just kind of three kind of general questions, just from my understanding, Alex. So we responded to 14 of them, I think you said earlier. Looks like we've kind of reported out four of them. So do we anticipate, like, maybe this next year we'll maintain those four and maybe add five more? I mean, is this like a two- or three-year kind of program? Or do we anticipate kind of bringing the remainder of those reporting areas into the year-two effort?
Well, some of them, like the youth services and housing services, they really developed their lining of questioning based on full-blown departments. A great example is facilities management. We have two employees and a department head in charge of facilities management, really didn't tailor toward their line of questioning. They were looking at, you know, full-staffed departments with, you know, significant budgets. I'd have to look at the measures again, but it really just didn't apply to how we are, how we've structured our facilities management. So in the future, as we develop our facilities management division, that would certainly be something we would look at, at bringing into the ICMA CPM.
And then finally, I'm assuming the answer to this question is yes, but the MUNIS system, I'm sure, had to play a part in being able to gather a lot of this data, right?
It wasn't. It was a great time to do it as well because as we're entering in the MUNIS and getting comfortable with it, MUNIS has the capability of having just so much more information added to it. And we're really identifying things that the ICMA is tracking and comparing and other communities are. And we see a lot of benefit in those. And there were quite a few examples where we just didn't have the information because we didn't have the resources available, but we knew coming in with MUNIS, that would be available in the future.
Right.
So it's been a great time to be participating so we can identify these needs early.
And so there is, there's another benefit of the enterprise software that we couldn't have done with a legacy system. And David certainly caught my attention when you said things like federal grants require a lot of this outcome-based information, bond rating agencies, those types of things. We just couldn't do that without them. I would think a large part of that without the MUNIS system. So, you know, I think it speaks to the wisdom of the city manager and the staff, the IT staff, to want to move forward with that. So, thank you. Thank you. Next in the queue is Alderman Sterns.
Just a few specifics on this, on this, Alex. Number one, is there any statistical significance to any of the information? I mean, do they give it a value in terms of, like a p-value for statistical significance? In scientific research, we usually see-
The closest you'll see is the standard deviation as far as the variance between-
I didn't see any standard deviations. Where is that information?
It was on some of the beginning tables. The difficulty there is if you've got an N of 11, you're, almost nothing's going to be statistically significant.
Right, right. Okay. And that answers the question.
But that doesn't mean that if we don't expand this, at the point where maybe we hit a couple of dozen, 25 on up, then we may very well be able to figure out where we are. But at this point, especially if you've got 11, this is just sort of good old-fashioned eyeballing.
Well, it is. It is, and that's exactly my point. That's exactly my point. And eyeballing this really concerns me. I mean, the concept of benchmarking, the concept of performance measurement isn't one that anyone can understand. It's obvious for any endeavor to have benchmarking. When we look at really comparing our city, I mean, I see that we're kind of looking at sizes and population, but when we look at differences in culture, in geography, in, you know, university towns versus, let's say, if I may, you know, blue collar, white collar, all kinds of major, major factors, I really am kind of, I'm clueless on how we can really come up with a meaningful comparison to cities like cities in California. You know, we have to look at political structure of a state. We have to look at unemployment rates. We have to look at so many statistics that I really, you know, I question the validity of looking at benchmarks comparing when we've got literally hundreds of factors that differentiate Bloomington as a very unique city from all these other cities. So I guess that's just a comment. But I guess what concerns me is, is the data really going to be presented as, you know, statistically significant fact to our citizens? And can we really do that? I'm not sure. But that's a comment. I guess a question would be the cost of this. I don't know. I assume there's a cost to belong to the city managers association. I'm sure you spent hours, many, many hours on this, Alex, I would think. And I'm really interested in what this is going to cost the city in staff time, in, you know, membership to these organizations, program, software, et cetera, et cetera. Is there any way to even begin to talk about costs associated with doing this?
If I could answer that, yes, there is some cost just to be members, but I would, you know, put forth, what's the cost if we don't do any of this comparable? We can talk about, you know, what does good value mean in providing the service? Sooner or later, we're going to have to answer, even for ourselves, what does it cost to provide many of the services? And so we're going to have to even gather that data ourselves just to look inward for each and every one of our programs. What this is, is again, it's a tool. And frankly, my goal here is it has to provide results. It has to provide concrete, you know, very specific improvements along the way. In fact, as Alex mentioned, that's why we aren't answering all the questions. Where my advice and counsel is, let's look at those things that really concern us, things that we want to measure ourselves, to collect the data, to even look inwardly, and then that we think are maybe some of those higher priorities, things that we really need to look at. Unfortunately, too often, even in many of our departments, we don't even have some of the basic workload information. Some do, some don't. How can you measure progress unless you have some baseline? How can you measure efficiency if you don't have at least some of the costs of what it's costing us today so that we can measure going forward? So all, this is helping us, kind of forcing us really to start at first base and, you know, home plate, really starting to get that data before we can even be able to come to you and give you opinions on how efficient, effective we're providing this. So I think that's even the better. If we don't, if we're not measuring, how do we ever know what kind of progress and value we're delivering to our citizens?
And Alderman Sterns, I think, does raise some good points. As we're, you know, looking at data, one would be, it might be that we've got some really good reference points. Let's say we, and we probably want more than 11. And maybe we even have three or four groups that we compare ourselves to. And they might also differ, of course, depending on whether we're talking about police, fire, or Parks and Rec. I mean, there may, the comparison cities maybe will, you know, differ as we do that. But I think as Alderman Sterns does suggest, that I think we're not going to go out and try to pretend that the data is any more than it is. It is what it is, all its warts. We're comparing ourselves in one group to 12, maybe another group 25, another group 30, cities. This is where we are. It just is. You know, we're third here, we're 27th here, and again, not overstating what we have, right? So, excuse me, were your questions in?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I think what I can conclude from this is we have no idea of the cost as far as staff times and such. I mean, we can't, we can't, there's no way to do it. And then what's the cost of not doing it? You know, I understand that. I understand the use in grants. I really don't need any more explanation, David. I do understand exactly what you're getting at here. But, you know, fortunately, in financial reporting, we know the benchmarks, you know, debt per capita, reserves, et cetera, et cetera. And we know our bond rating, which is probably the ultimate way the city's rated. These other benchmarks, it is good to know. It is good to calculate what our starting point is. But for comparisons to cities in California or around the country, I'm not sure, as Mayor Renner said, what we can definitely conclude or what's really valuable to our citizens. Thank you.
Alderman Fruen, and I got the, in order here, I have Alderman Fruen, Mila Wambway, and Lauer.
Thank you. I'll try to keep my comments short. I think for the most part, things that I'm thinking about have been expressed by several of the others. It looks like population is kind of the key that a lot of these metrics are based on. So as other people have mentioned, it'd be interesting to know more about the demographics of a community. You could go by department by department with some of the things you illustrated, age of housing stock, types of recreation facilities being provided, on down the list. And most importantly, I think what I'm pulling away from this tonight is, this is really becoming almost a compliance issue. More and more people are asking for it, whether it's the public or whether it's a accounting group or whatever. So I think we're, you have to start somewhere, and we're going to see some things that are maybe questionable. We'll get there. maybe questionable, we'll, we'll get there. And maybe it's good, better, best, or some kind of a slogan like that, or 1% each time, but I'm really appreciative of the work that we've started and look forward to improving it as we go.
Thank you. Alderman, Millow Wambway, and then Alderman Lauer.
Thank you, Alex. A great job, I really enjoyed it, reading it, and it looks like a pretty large undertaking, so I have one comment and a question. I, I do understand the, the concern about the numbers, and I initially myself had the same concern, you know, what does that mean? I mean, who are we comparing ourselves to? We could compare ourselves to somebody who's not, although they are the highest, they seem to be the highest rated, but yet, it's not that great. You know, people who experience the service might feel differently about it. But at the same time, I, I think it, it still provides a foundation from which to work on, and eventually, over the years, you know, as we make improvements, then it provides a, a way of comparing even ourselves to where we were before. So, I think in that sense, it, it's pretty good. My, my question is, is more about the how and, you know, how it's going to work over the next, you know, few years, and how is the staff, you know, what seems like a large undertaking to me, how is the staff going to cope with it? And how are we going to organize it? You know, I, I heard you talk about committees, you know, in other areas to analyze the, the information and, and work with it, so.
Okay. Alderman Lauer?
Just a couple of real quick ones. I think the ICMA is a great thing, I'm sure, but I'm, I'm aware that there are some other groups out there that look at these types of issues at the same time. And I think that we ought to, I think we're kind of taking a narrow view of the entire picture if we don't include some of the other data, such as the Cato Institute and Illinois Policy Institute, and there's others. So, and I, I'm kind of looking at this with caution, because we can study some of these things to death and spend a ton of money doing it, what are we doing? Are we rowing in a circle here, or are we actually making headway? One of the things that I think, and I, I keep coming back to this, I don't think that we look within enough. We don't talk to the guys with the boots on the ground. If you're looking for efficiencies, those are the folks that are going to know how to do it better. And I don't think we're even asking, okay? In some departments, I'm sure we are, but many of the guys that I talk with, Public Works, don't feel like their ideas go anywhere, okay? And I think that's one place, if we want to save some money, we want to look at some real efficiencies, we ought to talk to the guys that actually do the job day in and day out. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Anything else? All right. Thank you, thank you, Alex. Appreciate it. And we, moving right along to an update on the $10 million street resurfacing project, and I'll turn that over to City Manager David Hales.
Mayor and council, we know that, you know, we all have a lot invested in this $10 million street project. It has required us to have existing staff redirect their efforts. You've also approved some contracts. We wanted to give you a quick update and also share with you our current projection and timeline of when we would be bringing back to you a contract to do the work, as well as what you can expect in the months ahead. And then, following that, we thought it appropriately to talk about curb and gutter so work. So, first, the update on the $10 million street resurfacing project by Jim Karch, Public Works Director.
City Manager Hales, thank you so much. I'm pulling up right now as we speak, trying to get the presentation going. As, as you're well aware, this, this amount of resurfacing is unprecedented for, for the city of Bloomington. The amount of effort that this has gone into for a $10 million bond is, is two and a half times what we've done in the past, so it is significant. On top of that, we're very thankful, but we've also been looking at the sewers, and that's caused us some additional complexities. So, as we go through this, it's good for you to keep that in mind. I say all that to let you know that, that I'm so proud of our staff and how hard they've been working. You need to know that. They've really put in a lot of time and effort into, to going through this. And we are on schedule. We have been breaking a lot of backs to keep on schedule, but, but they have really done a tremendous job of, of doing that. So, with that being said, I will go through this presentation. So, with this, you know that we've, we've already started with the ratings, you know about that. We've gone to the master list, to which you've seen, and we had on the internet for everybody to see. What we've done since then, I thought it would be beneficial for the council to see an example of what we look at whenever we look at the, what our staff looks at. We also, we actually go out in the field. I think it's important for you to know, this isn't just a theoretical thing. We actually have the, those boots on the ground that go out there and look at where are the manholes, inlets, what needs to be adjusted, look at the sidewalks. So, we, we actually don't guess, we go out there and take a look at it. The important thing for you to know is throughout the process, from the beginning when we suggested it till now, this is subject to change. We notice I'm not going to get into too many specifics, because we don't want to see the streets just, just yet, because we are still working to finalize all of the streets, you know, all of our main roads to which we're trying to get to. We're looking at the arterial roads. We're also trying to get into some of the residential, but a lot of our focus is on those major roads in the city. And then even, we, we gave a much larger list of those streets we're, we're wanting to look at. But the thing I wanted to, to kind of hit a little bit tonight is sewers. You know, you talk about resurfacing, and why do you talk about sewers? Well, what's underneath the street, the sewers? And the, with us doing more televising, we've always talked about it, it's a positive and a negative. The positive is you know it's there, and the negative is you know it's there. And so, you know, I, I thought the best way to, to give you this visual is, I actually brought you a video of probably one of the, the ones we recently have seen that I think really, really is a, I, I call it the Douglas Street I-mev hole. And so, I think you'll all like this. This is Douglas Street, just east of East Street. This is a 36-inch brick sewer, but it's active. It is, is actively being used. All that smoke is not anything on fire like we had here with the ballast, that was actually the heat off of the, the water in there. Now, on the left, that, that actually isn't a manhole. That, on the left, that is actually a hole in the sewer. There's a 24-inch abandoned parallel sewer, the brick has collapsed, you know, we call it the I-mev sewer, because you could fit an I-mev into it. And so, the, you know, this, this is the type of, there are, there are situations like this that we run into. So, I think it was important for you to, to kind of see that this is important, that we did this. This is, this is really important that we, we did. My thanks to you, then in September, as a council, you said, not only are we going to allow Public Works to look at the street, we're going to give some additional funding and allow you to look at some of the sewers. And so, what did we do from there? What we did from that point is we actually went out to the street, to Douglas, and we did repair. So, this was actually in Douglas. Some of you can see there's even, if you drive by that now, there's some temporary pavement put back, but we used an emergency repair contract, and we're continuing to use even some of this bond funding as we need to, to do some of the fixes on the roads in the street. The intention is so that we don't pave over any I-mev holes. We don't, we don't, you know, do any of that to where it comes back and, and it burns us a little bit. That's one of the things we've tried to do, great coordination with other departments, looking at other utilities. Is that going to make it perfect? One thing I wanted to tell you tonight is, it will not. One of the things we are seeing quite a bit of is we're seeing a lot of our sewers, our mainline sewers are clay, which are, you know, they can be inert, they can be good for a long time, there can be some cracking that, that is, that is along the hinge that can cause some issues. But the key for that, though, is that if you line that pipe, it can actually be just fine for quite a long time. So, one of the things you're going to find out of this is, we're going to be coming back, and it's actually coincidentally already part of the sewer master plan. So, this isn't, this wasn't a shock to us. This is part of best management practice to have a fully functioning sewer lining program. But one of the things we saw out of this was, we have a lot of candidates for sewer lining. But the, right now, we're in those final phases of what can we, what do we need to pull out, and what can we leave in for this $10 million bond? Those decisions, we have to have that done by February 20th. We've been scrambling, I even had some staff that was working Sunday and Monday, even coming in to try to continue to look at the sewer, sewer pipe. They're even rallying tomorrow, they have their weekly meeting, they have a weekly project meeting to go through and see what needs to be done to meet the schedule. So, it is getting done. But here's the key, when I was just talking to the staff right before I came over here, and I was saying, what are you finding the most of? Because this was the person that was looking at video the whole weekend, so his eyes were a little bloodshot, but he was, he had been, he'd really been pouring out. So, he said, you know what I'm seeing more of? He said, I'm seeing more sewer lateral issues. I'm seeing a lot, that's where the pipe leaves the mainline and goes to the residence. And so, you know, the, as a city, we, we can come through and we can televise the mainline, but if there's some, some issues within the right of way on the private street, I, I want to make sure I say this publicly in front of you, in the future, there are some places and times when you have to dig, you know, we aren't able to televise all of the sewer laterals. So, there might be issues still, even with us televising the sewer and coordinating with the water department and doing everything we can do, there still might be times, we've done due diligence, but there, there definitely are some sewer lateral issues out there for us. So, with that being said, we're finishing up our document.
Jim, I just want to, since we were talking about performance measurement, if you would also kind of contrast this with how much we've been able to do in the way of TV, you know, of sanitary sewers in years past, because I think we've contracted this out, any kind of data you can share on just what has been our TVing program in the past, how robust it has been, or problems, versus kind of what we're seeing and getting in the way of data this time around.
Well, thank you, City Manager, that's a great point. We'll, I'll get you the numbers. I'll email that out through the City Manager past that. But this, what you're seeing, though, is a change in practice. We do have a camera truck in-house, that normally, though, is utilized for whenever we're doing digging operations, to check on backups, things that we need to do for more point issues. And it also is for, for us to televise new, new subdivisions before they're accepted to make sure that the pipe is okay. We aren't currently at a staffing level where we're able to televise the thousands of pipe, thousands of feet of pipe, miles of pipe in the city of Bloomington that we have, to be able to keep up with that. We're not at a staffing level for that. So, we'll get that data to you, but the key thing for you to know is, this, this large-scale televising has been critical for us, and we need to continue to maintain something like this. The key, though, another thing to, to focus on, the City Manager pointed out, there's a difference between the, the regular pipes and the brick sewers. Brick sewers are, you know, over 100 years old, some of them, early 1900s in, in many, many ways, and those sewers in particular, we're seeing a lot of issues. Maybe not an I-mev hole, but a basketball hole, and so, it's a, so, so what we're trying to do right now is assess, can that be point lined? Does it need to be dug up and repaired? What can we do with some of what we're seeing? And that's the, that's the scramble point for our staff for the next three weeks. It's good for you to know that. And that's what we're trying to, to do that final assessment on. So, we're finishing that up, we are focusing on quantities. There will be, we continue to ask for flexibility from our council, because, you know, what we've done is we've tried to mitigate everything we can to get, take care of, take care of all contingency factors, but as always, throughout the course of a year, as you mill, mill down with streets, you're going to find some other issues, possibly, we've done everything we can, but that can happen. So, we will continue to work off the best information we have. So, we are on schedule to bring back to the council on the 24th of March, well before even the end of the fiscal year, before the, the asphalt plants open up, a $10 million bond for your approval, for the contract to be approved. So, at this point, then, I tried to get through that in a timely fashion to give you time to ask questions. You'll also notice in your packet a handout with some of the additional information.
Okay, some questions of Mr. Karch. Alderman Fruen?
Is our, is our bond bid broken down into different components? Are we going to see more than one contractor bidding on different phases, or is this a one size for every, for one contractor?
It, it will be broken down, but it's not going to be broken down to the level that we have in the past. Some of what we've tried to do, it's, this has been a difficult one for us, if I'm just being honest. This, the size of this contract has been difficult for, for us to be able to get our arms around it. What we're trying to do is, we are going to bid a large enough scale that it won't be able to accommodate, as sometimes we try to do, a lot of times, just you know, we make a, a lot of effort for our regular annual program to have some smaller dollar ones, so even some of our local, even without naming names, some of our smaller asphalt volume vendors to be able to bid on. With as much work as we had, we weren't able to break it up into that kind of component. So, we are looking at larger scale operations. Good, that's a good, great question. Most likely, it could be multiple contractors, though there is a contractor from out of town that has the potential to come in and bid that. And so, that is, that is possible. So, it's, otherwise, we would have made the recommendation to you to do a sole source. And staff did not make that recommendation, because it is our hope that it will be a multiple contractor bid, but we can't guarantee that.
Alderman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Jim, thank you so much for the presentation. As we've had this rough winter, I'm curious to know, I've gotten some comments from some folks, that the road seemed a little bit rougher because of the salt, the quick freezing, the harsh conditions that we're having in this volatile weather. How much of our bond money is being put towards addressing those kind of unforeseen instances?
What our bond does is, the bond money that we have, it is trying to, it takes into account some of the, the ratings, some of the concerns that people have expressed, a balance between arterials and residential. Potholes are indicative of an overall pavement rating. Once we start seeing four and under for our pavements, they're just indicative you're going to start seeing them. The way we're hitting our potholes, I actually, it's funny, because every February, every January and February, I always feel bad for WJBC and the Panograph, because they have to find a new way to write a pothole story, and that's a difficult thing to do. But, you know, because it, it's just common in Illinois.
Look at Rachel's face, just, just to embarrass her.
It's, it's a tough thing to have happen. So, so, you know, what we do, what we're finding, though, what I have, what I've, it seems like we're seeing is that actually there's less potholes than we've had somewhat in the past, even though they seem, actually, it seems like they're deeper to me, but, but there's less, there, you know, a few years ago, it seemed like they were even worse, and, and we're all attribute some of that to, and what we do, with a full credit to our crews, and you need to hear that our streets and sewers crews and Public Works, because of the council and, and the work that you've given us with some of the hot asphalt, the hot boxes, some, the, the compact, you know, the compaction equipment that we have, it's wider, we're able to get better patches done, that's allowing us to deal with the pothole areas, that we, we can't do enough resurfacing right now. We're not to the tipping point. You, a lot of you have asked me off, sometimes off to the side, sometimes publicly, when are we to the tipping point yet? Is this, is this the tipping point where we're finally ahead? We're, we're not there yet, but we're getting there. This, this bond does help, but we, the, the things that are going to get us over that hump are the permanent pothole patching, the pavement preservation, and your continued belief in us moving forward with our streets. That will, that will be what will eventually, and hopefully, in, in a short number of years, get us to that tipping point where we can finally get ahead of the game and be spending good money, instead of trying to always deal with the worst first. Thank you.
Other questions? See you then. Thank you very much. Actually, we're moving on to curb and gutter policy.
And Mayor, just, Jim's going to go through this, but I just want to make this comment is, I think as we found with the Locust Colton project, the Public Works Department, the engineers had a program, kind of an internal policy on what curb and gutter was going to be replaced, which was not. And unfortunately, we continue to have a lot of citizen concerns raised, we had Alderman raising those concerns too, wanting us to do more curb and gutter replacement rather than less, or to follow with kind of our standard protocol. We believe that the number of concerns that will be raised by property owners will increase even more so with this $10 million, because it's, I think what we see time and time again, people get a new street, and yet, if they have crappy looking, you know, curb and gutter, and they only get a few sections, they're thinking, "City, why don't you spend the money to replace the curb and gutter, so that when we look out our window, it is nice new curb and gutter, nice new street, et cetera, et cetera?" We can do that, but we would do a lot less in miles. And tonight, what we want to make sure that you, as policymakers, make sure that you're on board and comfortable with what we're going to do going forward. If you feel otherwise, now's a great time to give us that input. But again, we're speaking from experience, and many of you have been there, done that, you've heard from people. So, Jim, kind of share with everyone kind of our current protocol and practice on curb and gutter replacement when we resurface the city street.
Well said, City Manager. Mayor and City Council, this, this next presentation, again, we'll try to get through quickly, but if you can, in your packet, you have some information, both, quite a bit of information already, that I'll, I'll do my best not to repeat for you here, but some of it is good to hit some highlights. In September of 2013, our staff, in anticipation of this bond project, took to the City Council, the, the infra, to the, excuse me, not to the City Council, to the Infrastructure Committee, kind of what we were looking to do with the curb and gutter, because we knew there was going to be a lot coming up. We had seen some of the issues we'd experienced with Locust Colton project, and we understand, people care about the, the curb appeal, you know, that we have a, you know, we, it's important to people. So, what we tried to do is we tried to look at, look at the numbers, you know, what are, what are the numbers here, and what are the, what are the gives and takes? With anything that we choose, there's always the positives and negatives with anything, and that is really a policy-level decision, but, but that's what we wanted to make sure we brought again before the full City Council, so that you understood and had the backing that you needed to be able to answer questions if and when you should get them next year during construction season. So in summary, up on the screen, you can see some of the same information that is before you. In summary, it takes about twice as much money, just over twice as much money, if you want to do the mill and fill plus curb and gutter replacement. So if, if the council were, as opposed to just spot repair. What we do now, it's not as if we ignore curb and gutter, not at all, that is, but what we do is we do point repair. And that's where we look at what's serviceable, what isn't serviceable, how do we try to get this curb to where it is, not perfect, it really isn't, but it will be functional. And that's where that definition can be difficult as well for folks, what might be functional to some means pretty and the entire way across my property, and to others, it's working and serving to, as the barrier for the parkway. So let's look at that. Serviceability for the curb and gutter, the functions of it is to carry the stormwater. I mean, it's a barrier between the street and the parkway or lawn. Something, an interesting point for you to know as a council, that if we have to replace more than 40% of the curb, it's cheaper for us to just replace all of it, because point curb and gutter repair does cost more than when, than whenever you do the full curb and gutter. So it's good for you to know that, it's not as if we don't understand that concept as well, so we have to look at that. Why, it used to be a practice in the city of Bloomington, I think I've told you as a council this before, that we'd always just overlay. We'd just come in and we wouldn't mill necessarily, we'd just put asphalt over what's there and overlay the gutter pan and keep overlaying and overlaying. We actually had some streets that looked like a parabola, you know, they just had a nice big hump in the middle, and you'd, you know, you'd drive down the road just in an angle, it almost felt like, because you, that was just what was done, that was the way that it had been done for a long time. The reason why that didn't work now that we're finding is, and I understand, the point of why they did that was to save money. They, they did that knowing, so it's, in defense of them, they did that knowing that it would save money, it's much cheaper to do that than to mill and fill, and you can do that a few times before you have to be worried about the curb and gutter. But now, staff and the city, we're dealing with some of the, the outcome, you can see this nice picture up on the screen, what curb and gutter, it looks like a piece of concrete that's six inches wide right beside the road. That used to be a curb and gutter, it's just been overlaid so much, we can see that in many parts of the community. The standard curb is six inches high, what we try to deem as serviceable is two inches. It's not as if two inches is perfect, but two inches still allows for some water to be carried, it still allows for it to get to the curb and gutter, it still provides that balance between the parkway. You have to find a, there has to be some sort of level, so that's where we still deem that it's, it carries enough, it's not perfect, but it's good enough. So this is just an example of what needs to be addressed. But some of the other things we have to balance are character of the neighborhood. It's important for you to realize that if we had to tear out all the curb, this is Kreitzer, by the way, if you had to tear out all the curb and along Kreitzer, whenever you tear it out, it's not as if there's nothing behind it, you have to also tear out some of the, the parkway behind that to be able to come in and do a full curb and gutter replacement. One of the things that hits is trees. You know, there's always a balance with trees, I, I, I love a good tree, just not necessarily sometimes where they're put, but that's a different, that's a different issue. But the, for this with, you know, if we were to come in and tear out all that curb and gutter, what's behind there, you would impact a lot of those trees, so that's another thing we have to consider. Sandstone, Bloomington has a great, excuse me, one second, hit the wrong button there, sandstone. Bloomington has a great history, we've got a lot of beautiful streets that used to be brick that you can see are overlaid, that's something that's not uncommon to see, right? Right at the intersection, sometimes that asphalt will peel away. The edging here is sandstone. Sandstone is unique for us, I think it's just good, because we'll get this question every year, so it's good for you to hear. Sandstone is extra difficult, because with sandstone, you, you don't want to remove the sandstone and put back new curb and gutter, that'd be the worst thing that could happen, because as soon as you take that sandstone away, it's like the bookends on a shelf, that all those books which are the brick would all fall out, and the sandstone is what holds it together. Bricks can be a great base, and they can be a great street, but if you take the ends off of it, they just fall apart like a deck of cards, and so the sandstone is really important. We would actually even look at if we were to ever, and when we do, because it's difficult, when we do, we'd almost look at grinding down the surface and putting an adjacent curb and gutter beside it, rather than taking out the sandstone, that'd probably be better from a, just an overall constructibility standpoint. But we usually opt to leave it as it is, that's important for you to know. Oh, so, okay, so with that being said, what questions do you have?
Comments, questions for Mr. Karch?
Can I, Mayor, if I might, and Alderman Sterns, you might want to comment, because I, I think you were the first one, in Locus Colton, we really got into some streets like East Jefferson, which I know as you brought those concerns to me and Jim, when I went out there, boy, they did look bad. And I think in hindsight, again, we've had a lot of discussion of trying to make sure upfront, let's try and avoid, you know, some of these, you might want to share a few of your observations, because you really took the brunt of these complaints from citizens, because it was in your ward, the Locus Colton project.
Right, well, one of the, one of the things that happens when the city does repave or resurface a street is citizen expectations, and that's not always understood, particularly on that 1,200 block of East Jefferson, I'll just use that one, Kreitzer is another one, but they, their street was torn up, they underwent a lot of, you know, hardship and inconvenience. So they assumed we're getting a brand new street, and this was one where overlay had been put on, and certainly we're not going to have drainage problems, so we're going to need brand new curbs. You know, Jim, you and I spent a fair amount of time out there, Terry, you came out, Mayor Renner, David got involved, and we did manage to put together some solutions to some people's satisfaction. One of which was that at least one citizen was allowed to do a 50/50 on their curb. Correct?
That's correct.
And that actually was, I think, a sort of creative and innovative way to get it done, and it worked. In other situations, the repair was so extensive that the city came in and rebuilt the curb, I think on Kreitzer and some, in some places, other places too. But yes, the citizen expectation is extremely important and needs to be dealt with. You know, I'm a fan of doing the curbs, the new curbs, because of the drainage issues, just because, you know, when the city goes in and endeavors to do that, people want to see a really nice professional finished thorough job, like frankly, they did get on Country Club, and it's an example of a beautiful job, really, and they appreciate it, but their entire street was torn up. I mean, it was just, you know, there, and they had no curbs. So I think you have to be careful here with, with the expectations, but, you know, it, it's important, it's something that really needs to be considered on every block and every, in every street, and I guess, thank you.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that.
Alderman-Fazini?
Yeah, Jim, the fact that it costs more than twice as much to do the curbs is information we need to be able to talk to citizens and say, you know, we're going to spend $10 million, and we're going to get this many streets, and if we do all the curbs, we're only going to have half that many streets. We'd rather do more streets. So we're going to have to be the ones to sort of stand up and say, guys, you know, let's be real, and that's okay. The total miles of city streets, about 800?
800 lane miles of streets, yes, that's right.
Yes, 800, and, and we have about, and we have private roads all throughout the city, that's over 43 miles, so about 5% of more, that we don't take care of at this point. Okay. Yeah, I, I just think it's important to know that it's going to be up to us to sort of stand up and say, yeah, we like perfect curbs too, but that's not in the cards, folks.
What I will ask is if council does like, you know, what, again, if council agrees with what we're doing, all this information, we're going to be putting out on the internet, so anybody who goes out to see what we're doing, we want to educate, we want them to understand, because I think Alderman-Sterns, you're exactly right, expectations are very important, and that happens through education and communication, and that's how, you know, we really want to be very forthright, and here's, we're not to that tipping point, it's very easy to communicate, we're not to that tipping point with our streets, so we want to get as many streets as we can done, and this is a way to balance that. So maybe some point we'll be to that level where we can deal with every street in that way, but we're not there to that point yet, at least that's what staff would recommend only.
And Jim, if, if we were to take and say, let's, let's do another map that says, we're going to do all the gutters, we'd have a map with half as many streets being done. Maybe we should have that map, just so that we could say, here are the people who won't get a street done if we do all the gutters, and that might help.
Mayor, if I could, because I think it ties into this, Jim, do you want to show, we do have a couple of streets where we are planning on replacing all the curb and gutter. I just want the council to understand that there is a couple that things are so bad, do you recall where those are?
MacArthur, MacArthur is going to be looked at for that, we've actually reached out to some of the citizens.
And maybe mention why? Why are you looking at 100% replacement there, as opposed to some of the other?
Right now, I don't have pictures of MacArthur, but the City Manager brings up a very good point. What, with that, the reason why, MacArthur and then also Linden, those two streets we're looking at, because they look like, Linden, for example, is, you know, the street's been patched, it's a patchwork of the street, there's no curb left, it's shot, it is a, is a collector road as well, you know, it's really a feeder road for a lot of areas. Some of the, the concerns for Linden though, is that we actually want to look at widening it a little bit, because it's only 26 feet wide, and it's not even a 30-foot residential, and with, you know, carrying as much traffic as it does, we, we really want to look at doing a, kind of a joint effort to widen it, and the same thing with MacArthur, MacArthur in a specific area needs to be widened a little bit because the curb has failed. But we've reached out to citizens, wanted to get some input from them. Linden, I will say, is a concern for us right now, we're trying to be preparing a letter for them, so if they're listening, they can get a little preview, but we're, there might be some potential concerns with some of the sewers, and some of the utilities and the water mains, so, so again, we always have to look at that, we, we want to get some feedback, but part of that process is, is what we're going through.
Okay, yeah, we're way over time, but we do have some questions, yes, Alderman-Sterns and then Alderman-Furhle.
Real quick, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Just real quick, the issue of back to curbs, I'm going to assume, I mean, just leave the look of a nice new curb, I mean, in my opinion, yeah, I understand that we can't always have the best look, but I'm sure that we are going to maintain the functionality of drainage. I mean, I, I don't, am I correct in that assumption, that we cannot ignore that the functionality of drainage is critically important, and?
You and I dealt with this on, Alderman-Sterns on Jefferson, as I recall, and what we had to look at is, it was important, because the way the street was functioning then, it wasn't draining well, and so we had to do something, because, you know, you don't want to have a, you don't want to have a brandly, brand new paved street that has a whole bunch of, half the road sitting with water.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, very much so.
Right, Alderman-Furhle?
Okay, just a very quick question, Jim, can you talk to me about the science behind the, the trees in the parkway? It seems to me, just looking at the pictures, it's only a matter of time until the root system would really damage the curb.
John Kennedy, our Director of Parks and Recreation and Cultural Arts, we, we always have the, we always have the good, enjoyable conversation, that you try to balance that, that beauty and aesthetics with the fact that a lot of times the trees get into your sanitary sewer, they break up your curb because they're pushing against them, they're lifting up your sidewalk, causing concerns with that, so there's a balance, and, and so, out of complete respect for, we love the trees in the parkway, because they're beautiful and people want to live there, but then there's the, the other side of it too, so there's, that's one of the issues, actually, when we look at our sidewalks and what causes some of our sidewalk low rating, a lot of times it's trees. So, so we, that is a very real discussion we have a lot of times, trying to balance that.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, I appreciate that, and we will move right along to our next two items here, and of course, they're related. The first is the FY 2014 Action Plan update, we've got about 10 minutes budgeted for that, and then we have a draft of the FY 2015 Action Plan. So let's start with 2014, and I'll turn over briefly to City Manager Hales, and then we'll see what comments, questions we have from the City Council.
Very briefly, we tried to give you an update of where we stand on these projects, I think there was 24 of them. Keep in mind, let me even go back to the title, because oftentimes, the question's been asked, well, what's this list for? We've entitled it City Manager Action Plan, because as far as my performance evaluation goes, why I prepared this list for next year is that these are priorities which you have given me as a City Manager to address during this upcoming year. There's no doubt that I think the 24 was overly aggressive, and we did run into some funding, some time, some resource issues in many of these, to where we're, we're really just physically and financially just haven't been able to complete, but I'm not going to go through the list, I will just say, we wanted to give you that as background to get into the fiscal year 2015 Action Plan, because that's, I think, the more important one. So before going to fiscal year 2015, I'll just see if there's any questions on the current fiscal year 2014 and the status report we gave on any of those, so is there any questions?
Questions of our City Manager.
Of any of those 24 projects?
I'll start with Alderman-Fazini and Black.
I, I thought we talked about the visitor center in downtown Bloomington being added to the plan, and I don't see it on here, did, did I miss that?
I, I remember there was priority discussion of that, and there was, wasn't there one or two others? I'm trying to think, I do remember that as a high priority. Ultimately, let's see, I'm trying to see, yeah. To me, I think something like that would show up in our five-year capital improvement program, because ultimately, you know, what we're looking at there is the city being a financial contributor to a facility that's going to be in a county-owned, you know, facility, things of that nature, so that would be an individual project within the five year. But, and we're taking that into account too, as we put together the fiscal year 2015 annual budget as well.
And just to clarify, when David was putting this together, you know, we, we chatted about maybe having too many items on an action plan that might be, what are our real big-ticket items? Like for example, the website, city, you know, city website transparency, well, we're continuing to do that, and probably we'll have a transparency ordinance to bring to legal shortly, but is that really one of the top things that the City Manager is actually pursuing, and especially if it's something that we think we may make some substantial progress in in the next 60 days or so, even before 2015 begins? So if there were things like that, it doesn't mean we're not committed to them, doesn't mean we're not going to keep moving forward, it just, they may not be one of our, as you have here, roughly 10 top priorities. Obviously, the Route 66 visitor center to get our share of Route 66 money that we don't get in downtown, et cetera, renovation, economic development, that's obviously important, but again, it doesn't have to be necessarily on the City Manager's list that he would then be evaluated for. Like right now, obviously, we're, we're still waiting to hear from the state, because we're hoping to get the quarter of a million dollars to help take care of much of the funding gap. So, anyway, I don't mean that, that's, the City Manager and I were talking about it, I don't know that I actually took a look at, or he said, you know, are you okay with this group of 10, but I think we talked about a lot of these items and said, you know, as we're pairing these down to make it a little more manageable, what kinds of things might not appear? Alderman-Black, excuse me.
Go ahead, Rob, you got more?
Oh, well, Rob, did you, I'm sorry, Rob.
Are we on the 2015 Action Plan now?
Not yet, not yet, we're still looking if there's any questions on?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I was just clarifying, kind of, I'm sorry, I carried us off there, just kind of as a segue to, as we're looking at 14, and then we move to 15, why is 15 so much shorter? Alderman-Black.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So on a high level, having seen a couple different varieties, versions of this, I'm not, I've never really been a fan of the format of this, in the sense that I, when I see something in progress, you know, that could be 5% towards progress, 95% towards progress, there's also a lot of subtasks that go into this, and so you might have, you know, all your ducks in a row, but one thing's missing, and you can't say it's complete. So when I, when I see this, I'd be interested to see that the 2014 one come back with maybe some percent of how close we are to reaching that goal, and then as we talk about 2015, set clearer guidelines as to where we are along each one of the ones that we decide are on the action plan, my suggestion.
Other comments for Alderman on 2014? Well, let's move to 2015.
Okay. Let me first give the why this is so heavy on capital improvement program. There's kind of a rhyme and reason to that. First, you know, we, we brought to you a nice executive summary on stormwater and sanitary sewer. What we haven't brought to you is a document that would say, here's our 20-year stormwater and sanitary sewer master plan, that financially is feasible for the city to move ahead with, you know, with priorities giving current or possibly enhanced funding sources, revenue. As you know, in those two, we have stormwater fees, we have sanitary sewer fees, what, staff is still going through literally 900 pages of backup material that is part of that master plan. I think all of you got a disc with maybe the first installment of some of that backup material. A true, and why I've got five-year capital improvement plan, a true five-year capital improvement plan is something we want you to approve, ultimately, as a council, it will have priorities, and it will be something financially that we have, you know, in our analysis and financially vetted, said, yes, that's doable. analysis and financially vetted, said, yes, that's doable, given current revenue sources, whether they're from these fees, whether it's from grants, whether it's from loans, et cetera, et cetera. We still have a ways to go with stormwater and sanitary sewer. It is my hope that eventually, we have a 20-year capital improvement program for you to adopt. But frankly, right now, I think one of the big goals for this upcoming year is before the end of fiscal year 2015, have you approved this five-year, because I think there's going to be a major political, financial challenge to even getting that five-year, you know, CIP together, just because of these needs are so massive. Keep in mind, I think we've talked about this 20-year master plan, when everything comes together, it's probably going to be a little under $400 million in deferred maintenance, deferred capital needs, things that have to be done for future growth, building capacity, et cetera, et cetera. So, what I've tried to do here is kind of bring back in some of the key elements, some of, it's like facilities. We gave you a report. We haven't brought you that prioritize list. And the struggle we're really having is especially in these general revenue, general tax revenue-funded projects, which sidewalks, facilities, downtown streetscape, street master plan, many of these pertain to. It's a little easier to take in our water, sewer, stormwater, and say, you know, here's the fees, here's, we have at least in the last five years, taken those sanitary sewer and stormwater and brought them back into the black with possibly the exception of stormwater. Five years ago, sanitary sewer was $6 million in the red. Part of what we had to do is just get that back into black, you know, and part of that was underbudgeting our expenditures, so that we could create some surpluses to eliminate that. So, that's why you're seeing a very heavy emphasis on infrastructure, which I think everyone would agree, that's where we have to set the priority. And frankly, to get to long-term financial planning, which brings back in operations, you know, existing programs, personnel, things of that nature, it's critical that we ultimately, hopefully by the end of the year, have that five-year CIP, we're realistic, and we can truly set priorities that the community and the residents and the businesses can say, okay, if you're adopting this plan and three years out, you're saying you will do this for water, streets, so on and so forth, they want to know that we'll keep our work. They'll want to know that we fully, you know, in best assessed the overall condition and the inventory of all our infrastructure assets, and we know what we're talking about when we say, these are the priorities, this is what we can financially do, and here's going to be the funding source, not only from the general fund, but from each of these other special fees that are levied for some of these improvements. Procurement and purchasing policy is going to be key too. We're trying to make sure that we take a 30, 40-year-old ordinance dealing with procurement, bring that up to date. So much of that is going to be part and parcel of many of these capital projects and the funding and the contracting of those. And the last one, this general fund major revenue audit, we were nearing completion on our first one, having to do with gas and gas franchise and utility fees paid to the city, but we think it's important that our major revenue is something that we feel we're getting 100% of what is owed to us. And when it's not owed to us, what are we going to do about it? How do we go after that? So, I, I think this is a much more doable, I think it places the priority on infrastructure and trying to start to pull together all these separate studies and things of that nature, and with the help of finance and all the departments, really putting together a realistic financial implementation plan for the infrastructure needs of the city, which in my understanding, I don't think we've ever had in the city of Bloomington. And these size cities typically, in day one, I would have come and seen, what is your CIP plan, five, 10, 15 years out? What's your financing plan to do that? What's your long-term financial plan for operating and capital? So, this to me is kind of one of the highest priorities. Now, again, I, I've deliberately tried to keep it small in number. So, tonight, I think what I'd like to see is there are other things that maybe should be added. As an example, I didn't throw on here revitalizing city government, you know, what we talked about in the retreat, maybe other things. So, now, I certainly would like your input, and where does the majority feel changes should be made in this list? Mayor?
Thank you. And again, I just, it's not, there may be things like revitalizing city government, improving transparency, whatever, that we're going to continue to work on. And we could certainly put it back in here. It's just, in terms of what the city manager is doing for the upcoming fiscal year 2015, I think we can be reasonable, reasonably sure that much of what we're, our specific action steps will probably be completed by the time we begin, you know, our fiscal year 2015 in May. Or at least, they're all, seem to be within striking distance. And so, are these the top priorities that we're giving marching orders to the city manager? And of course, that's the council's pleasure on this. I'm going to start with Alderman Fazini. We're theoretically budgeted for 10 minutes, and we've exceeded that, but we will, this is important, so we're, I don't want to silence anybody, of course. Alderman Fazini?
Thank you. We have 43.6 miles of private roads in the city, and in the last five years, I think we've added none, which is probably appropriate, and would have been appropriate if we'd never had any. But, we have them. And we have problems with having people wanting to have the city take these over. I believe we need to not address each one individually, because I have two in my ward, and I've been talking to these people for two, two and a half years. I think a private road master plan would address how we go about bringing these into the city or not bringing them into the city, rather than addressing each one individually and making decisions separately. So, either as part of the downtown streetscape, no, it doesn't belong there, street master plan, either with the street master plan, put something in about private roads, or have a, a separate topic, one or the other.
Maybe, Rob, if I could maybe suggest something, is, if that could be even maybe part of a broader discussion of smart growth as we move forward? Or do you see that as not?
I, I think we solve the problem. We're not doing it anymore, and we haven't.
I see what you're saying. So, dealing with the 43 miles that we currently.
How do we fold that into the city or let these people know, you have no chance, they're yours?
Is that a, that a, a top priority? I mean, it's, it's something that we want, but is it consistent with the level that we're talking about here? A water master plan?
Yeah, it's consistent in that it is a master plan, and it's something that we do need to do, whether it goes in 2015 or some other time, whatever we want.
Let me ask, is there, is there anyone else who would like to put that on? Okay. Alderman Sage, go ahead, please speak to it then. I mean, to me, I, I think that that's something that, that is a legacy issue that we certainly wouldn't try to, you know, take forward nowadays. But, but again, it, I don't know, you know, Rob, it may be part of the plan, maybe it's just a policy statement too. I mean, something that, that offers some insider guidance in terms of, of a direction for, for private streets, maybe. Maybe that's an intermediate step, this side of the street master plan.
That would, sure, if, one-page policy plan, and that, then we look at each one based on the policy, fine. It doesn't have to be a master plan. That would, a master plan makes it sound like it's going to be a real big project. That isn't what I'm looking for, just some guidance.
Alderman Black?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think I, I'm fine on the whole for this, but it has a lot of plans and a lot of programs. I'd like to see at least one or two executions of, here's where we were at in 14, and here's what we have to do in 15, that kind of thing. And you mentioned the revitalizing the city organization. I think that's something that is measurable, definable, and we can see progress on that, and that actually requires some execution, so that's my suggestion.
Okay. Let's go back to, that's another suggestion, but let me, let's see if we have council agreement. We had a suggestion by Alderman Fazini, and this was seconded in effect by, not as a motion, but Alderman Sage agreed. If I could just ask very quickly if there is other sentiment, I'm going to start with you, I'm sorry, Alderman Bruin, you're on my left, and I'm going to go and ask everyone, just very quickly, a couple seconds, if you can chime in.
Mayor, I wish I could give you the answer that you want, a yes or no. But here we are, we're reacting to something that's coming up tonight.
Sure.
And is this the night we want to add some more things? Because I've got a couple of things I need to add, and everybody else does too. And we just talked a few minutes ago about why we're trying to condense this list.
Okay.
And sure, I support further study of it, but.
Well, so are you suggesting that maybe what we should have is follow-up with a work session on this before the, the action plan is adopted?
I think so, because I think each one of us would like to add, you know, our little, little special project to it.
Okay, of course, to some degree, what we might be wanting to avoid, but I understand what you're saying.
At this point, if you want a yes or no, I support the interest.
Okay, but maybe you raise a good point here. If, and maybe, Mr. Hales, perhaps what we can do, since essentially, you were looking for sort of just quick reactions, if you, if this was down for 10 minutes, maybe this isn't the time to do that, if there are many other things that we, we might want to address. So, perhaps we can bring this up at a subsequent work session, and then we, we can all, you know, think about what we really think is something that ought to be put on here as a very, very top priority. And I think Alderman Black raises something that is, probably should be on there as well. We might have broader council support for that. So, perhaps what we can do is to think about the things that we want to have on here, and perhaps email some of those to Mr. Hales, and have this on a work session before this is finalized. Is that, do that seem, any logistical issues with that that you see?
No, that'd be fine. In fact, I think if, if each and every one of you want to email me, because there is other goals, project lists, dealing with a lot of other smaller issues, so it's, it's helpful, but, you know, and I would say, if we were to add anything, I would wholeheartedly support adding revitalizing city government. You know, that's a big generic catch-on. I think we had a lot of discussion. I think in hindsight, you know, I should have added that, so I, I certainly see some value. But I, I keep in mind what we're, one of the things we're trying to achieve here or with anything separate is, what does not just one or two members want to see the city manager and staff do this next year, but more importantly, what does the majority support the city manager and staff do? Because one thing where we look to your support is, and that's why we've had, we have the committee of the whole, is just oftentimes, as we start off with a good idea on something, you know, and I'll just use open and transparent government. Sooner or later, we have to kind of put some meat on that topic and see, what are we talking about specifically? Is it an ordinance, or is it raising, you know, our score, or just what does it mean? But ultimately, you know, does the majority support that? And if so, you know, we'll go full steam ahead, given that there's resources and things like that. So, I think the thing I want to mention is that even if we get to the point of adopting this, I think for future committees of the whole, if something new comes up, what we want to make sure is that this, myself and staff can say, if we add something new, can we still accomplish these other priorities you've given to us? Or does something that, that need to come off the list? But that's kind of a, you know, an ongoing exercise that we want to use the committee of the whole for. So, any thoughts you can give me, email those to me. And keep in mind too, that all these are contingent upon the necessary financial resources being added to the upcoming budget. So, there may be some, some, some thought to, maybe we give tentative approval to this pending the budget review, and if certain financial resources aren't in there for some of these projects, then when we adopt the budget, we can come back and modify this list to make sure those things that aren't funded come out of the list, especially if they're financially tied to resources that are needed. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Yes, Alderman Fazini?
Yeah, not on that, but I want to express appreciation. There was a gentleman near the front who stood up and pointed at each of us, and I noticed our police chief came up and sat there right behind him, and he escorted him out, and I appreciate the concern. Thank you, Chief.
All right. Anything else? I guess the last item on our list is city manager's comments. Any final words there, David?
No. I'm trying to think why we added that, but I just had my comments.
Okay, and I don't have any, because I'm not going to, can add on to, I'll be talking at our next meeting. Thank you all very much, we're adjourned.